Okay, we welcome back Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Commissioners check in. The first portion of our check in was not live streamed because we were conducting applicant interviews for TRL Board of Trustee positions. And but we are now live streaming the rest of this afternoon's agenda. Public virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and will be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. So the next up is item two, which is Regional Housing Council, Community Action Council Recommendations.
Chair, the reason we flagged this item for you is because we are working still with the Community Action Council on recuperating the dollars that the county had to pay back. And as that process is going, when the Regional Housing Council is making the recommendation to fund the Community Action Council, based on conversations that took place last year when the item came up about the recruitment of the money, we wanted just to flag this for you and have an opportunity to talk to staff a little bit about it. An update as to our progress with the Community Action Council. Our Prosecuting Attorney's Office is involved in working with the insurance carrier that in the signing of the agreement to become a subrecipient of the funding, named us as an additional insurer. So they're working through that process. Well, we received a letter late last week from the insurance carrier on behalf of Community Action Council saying that they don't believe that their actions trigger any of our insurance. And so we're kind of working that through. Probably look to have a more detailed briefing once Prosecuting Attorney's Office can take a look at that letter in detail and come advise the board in an executive session. So with that, I'll go to you to kind of talk about the recommendations and what's being recommended to fund.
Yeah, so at this point, the Regional Housing Council has been working through their process. We received applications. And so the Regional Housing Council at their April ninth meeting made, is going to be presenting a recommendation for three awards to Community Action Council. One for seventy-two thousand seven hundred for basically basic needs activities. These are hygiene and household supplies, emergency hotel stays, car repairs, things of that nature. On the second award is estimated to be three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for the eviction prevention rent assistance program. This would be, they would, are proposing to serve single adults, seniors and veterans with those funds. And a third award for five thousand dollars for diversity, equity, inclusion training and support. Those recommendations came from the Regional Housing Council. So now staff is working to develop those contracts that we would bring forth to the board at your June seventeenth meeting for approval. However, we wanted to kind of get your input now at this point. So if the direction is kind of there's hesitation or reluctance move forward with CAC, it's helpful for us to know that now so we can allocate those funds to other agencies or and find another provider for the single adult or in the single population.
Commissioner Mejia?
Thank you. I'll just be very honest. I do have a lot of hesitance with moving forward with these. I have, just with that action, moving on a parallel track and being on the board when that happened, I have a lot of concerns. And so I'm wondering, have we talked to the prosecutor on, if we're thinking about one action, one hand, how relay new contracts is going to affect that? That's my first question. And next question is, this was rated as a high-risk organization just by the, everything that happened, the auditor and the internal auditor put it in that category. And so I'm wondering, has Brandon Weber or the Internal Auditing Committee had any discussion about what it is, you know, to contract with CAC? And understand that a lot of things have changed from their end, things, a lot of leadership, their full board has changed. But there was still, you know, that category, and I haven't heard if they've been moved out. So is there?
Can I add to that? I mean, there's a whole different set of players from that. But just to remind everyone, like, I kept arguing, like, why? Because that's why they, we were going to grant them, I think it was Hen, after, you know, in the wake of all that turmoil, because they'd done it in the past and we didn't know if there was anyone else to do it. And Robin Campbell was part of that. And it was insisted that they had, it had to be in the contract that they were labeled high-risk organization. I didn't quite know what that meant or what the significance was, but it ultimately led them to pull out at the last minute and not want to sign the contract. And I argued for it not to be in there because I was trying desperately to heal this relationship. And like, let's, I figured, let's heal it with something that they've always done and they've always done well to my, to our knowledge. So let's just stick with that and see if we can rebuild some trust. But staff insisted that it had to have that label. That caused them to pull out and we, and we never, like, and that, so it was a failure.
Can I clarify? It just wasn't staff, it was also the auditor. The auditor was very insistent, yeah.
Yeah, whoever it was, but I'm just saying that, like, I guess, is that something that we are, is that happening here? Is the, are we putting that language into their contracts now? And if we are, is that, is that okay with them? And does that prejudice them in some way? I just don't know where all that stands.
I can speak to, from the PAO side. When we originally were going through this last year, the council then was, yeah, it doesn't make sense to provide funding for contracts, new ones. We haven't rounded up on this current with PAO to make sure they're side by side. And this has not been discussed with the IAC. But Brandon Weber is involved and even working with the PAO attorney on the insurance component of it and getting all the details because of the fact that our auditor, Mary Hall, had a lot of background information. I, this is the first time I've heard the background of the high risk. So I don't know that, unless you tell me that it, I don't know that that's been part of our conversation. But I'm glad that we brought this here so that we can get the continuity and just figure out where we go. I think it is worth a conversation with the internal auditor and the IAC team just about where we're at and where we go from here.
I'd say the team is not at the contract stage yet, so they wouldn't have that language.
I'm just flagging it because like, I couldn't get, I couldn't get auditor and staff off that concept when I tried a couple of years ago. So I don't, I don't see what's changed or fixed about it and why that wouldn't be still a continuing concern.
Especially because the, you know, the Treasury said, like, I mean, the whole thing was fraud, not fraud. And the Treasury has come in and said fraud, right? And so.
Commissioner Fornier's hand was up, and I got Commissioner Grant.
Yeah, thank you. I'm hesitant, I'm not, I'm more than hesitant. I don't, I don't want to engage in any contract with the organization that we're still kind of in this, in this legal area with. I'd rather resolve all that, figure that all out. I'm not, I'm not comfortable with any new contracts. And then as far as like RHC, you know, funding recommendations, I still don't know that we've had like the full discussion about if we're going to be able to meet our obligations with some of the dollars from the right-of-way funding where we've got all these contracts that already exist. And I'd like to evaluate the obligations we have before we use any home fund dollars towards anything else.
Commissioner Grant?
Well, I guess, I guess I'm wondering that, you know, is there, for the funds that they're recommending for the three hundred thousand, remind me what those ones are for?
That's for rent assistance, eviction information.
For eviction rent assistance. And, and did no one else apply for eviction rent assistance?
So we received applications from Family Support Center and Community Services to serve the family and youth population. We also received an application from Partners in Prevention Education, who is the current provider at this point. Both the Home Services Advisory Board and kind of staff do not feel comfortable moving forward with PIP. That organization is going through some, we don't think they have the capacity to carry it forward. And so we don't have another obvious applicant to serve the single adult population for rent assistance at this time.
Well, I mean, I'm just going to give you guys my, I mean, I'm also hesitant to move forward after, and I did review all of this when it was occurring, in the middle of when it was occurring. You know, I think I'm more interested in making sure that our county policies on our side are in place that when we're funding a contract like this, that we're monitoring ourselves to make sure we're in compliance with whatever funding, you know, that this doesn't happen again. And, but I also would be hesitant in currently, I mean, Community Action Council may be one of the only places that could set this up. But I feel like if there was a call for the need that, you know, maybe there might, would be a response with Catholic Community Services. There are multiple places that could potentially pick up this funding, you know, if an outreach was done. So just letting my seatmates know that I also am hesitant on moving forward with, with contracting with Community Action Council.
I'll get to Commissioner Claus, but just, just to remind everyone that, we, I don't think this has come up, but the RILA gives the Board of County Commissioners basically up or down a thought, like, we don't, we can't move the money. We send, if we don't agree, we send it back to RHC for them to come up with an alternative. Just a reminder on that. Commissioner Claus?
Thank you. I, where do I want to start with this? So I agree with everything I've, mostly everything I've heard from my seatmates about the concerns and can understand those concerns. And I also hear, you know, when Commissioner Mejia says, like, there's been a lot of changes, you know, a new board, new leadership. Think those things are really important to consider. But I can also understand, like, the feeling of needing to be really, really cautious with this organization. So I don't want to negate that at all because it's a very valid concern. But I do have a couple of questions because I think that this population, especially seniors and veterans, I can't imagine pulling the rug out from, and maybe we're not pulling the rug out per se because they haven't gotten a contract yet. But when I hear like three hundred and twenty thousand for eviction rent protection for seniors and veterans, we don't have programs that are doing that here, and that's such an important thing. And it just so happens that the organization that wants to provide that is an organization that we have this history with that's really complicated. But I was wondering if staff could maybe speak to the improvements that have been made to the process? Because I know since everything happened with Community Action Council, the county has made a lot of improvements and changes to make sure that this doesn't happen again, I think. And is there some sort of contingency plan that could be built into a contract if we were to approve this funding? To make people maybe feel more comfortable? I don't know if that would even make people feel more comfortable, but those are kind of some questions that I have.
So I would say, yes, we've learned a lot in implementing rent assistance programs since the beginning of COVID, when we got that influx of money. And there have been procedures in place and working with Families Support Center and Community Services and input from Brandon Weber on checks to around fraud prevention. That doesn't mean it's a hundred percent foolproof, but I would say we've certainly made improvements over the years. Have we, as we've been doing this for now four or five years, and we've certainly learned some lessons and have made improvements.
Tom, what might be helpful is, and we don't have to do this here now, but I'll find that we can give to the commissioners and also to Brandon Weber. And it's for us to do a, what we, how we used to do it, and over the last several years, what we do now to make it stronger. Part of this is because I agree with the comments from the commissioners. When a nonprofit is working with us, we, we really need to have, now, this was a very extenuating circumstance, but we have safeguards in place upfront so that we can even determine whether or not they have the capacity to work with us based on what we, we know we need to do in order to safeguard the funding source. Because in this situation, we're the ones that have to give the money back. And that, you know, came out of the county's conference and not necessarily CAC. Now, we're working that through. But, yeah, so I think from even an administrative standpoint, I'd like to see, only having been here a year, we used to do it this way, but now because of the work we've done over the last several years, here's how we do contracts, here's what we implement, here's our, here's how we report back to them, monitor in real time. Because it is, the devil's in those details, making sure that we are being a responsive provider of funds to set our nonprofits up for success, because that's what we want, vibrant nonprofits that get the money, can work within the framework and execute and deliver great service. I think it'd be good for us even to bring that back to a work session and go over it with the board. So that, and have Brandon here because we need to continue to be an adaptive organization.
It may be, for example, you know, it may be that we, and I mean, I kind of get where you're going, Commissioner Claus. I mean, we have to, we want to get these resources to the community. And it may be that, like, this organization turns out to be the only one that can do it, that's willing to do it. But like, then if that's where we're at, then I would want to be briefed. Because again, I'm a little nervous just because everybody's new, right? Even the Prosecuting Attorney's Office completely shuffled, like, who's responsible for what in terms of giving us advice and reviewing contracts? And who's in charge of Civil Division because Elizabeth retired? So there may not be institutional knowledge that, that CAC told us, when we just asked them for the information so we could assess doing our due diligence, they said, you can't have that information because our business model is to protect, like, the community has to feel comfortable coming to us. Like, in different, and if they think that we would turn that information over to the county, you would destroy our business model. And we were like, well, too bad. I mean, I'm, I get that. I mean, I mean, I'm not saying that's illogical, but that's just not how a subrecipient monitoring requirements work, that we were under Department of Commerce, the federal Department of Commerce requirements. So I mean, and they just were defying that. So I mean, I would need assurance that all of those things have been contracted out. All of those ambiguities have been ironed through to where they have no, they have no room to make those kind of arguments. It's crystal clear what their duties are to comply with any monitoring that we have the obligation to, to engage in. And I would just want to make sure that all the contracts have been changed. We're not dealing with any of that vague language from twenty, whatever it was, nineteen or twenty twenty-one that allowed them to squirrel around with us and put us in litigation and put us essentially on the, I mean, our taxpayers are out seven hundred thousand dollars right now that we haven't seen. We could use that money for a lot of things.
It was money that could have been used for families in need that really needed that funding for rent assistance. And they couldn't get, you know, because there were, there was fraud. And when we highlighted it, it was, you know, just.
Well, so that money went to people that, to criminals. And then our money that could have been deployed for needs of the county are off to repay, you know, federal government. So it's like a double.
And I think an update to that is, we have been notified that there's a way for us to get part of that overall amount, for us not to have to pay the federal government back the entire amount. But we have still made two payments. And so yes, there is money on the line. What was extremely helpful for me is our auditor, Mary Hall, gave me a folder full of documentation. So we've given that over to Prosecuting Attorney's Team. But we also made that available to the new Executive Director, Justin DeForre. And as I reviewed each of those documents, the narrative is fairly clear that the county, and that's where Brandon Weber was also here at the time, did make a lot of effort to reach out to try to correct this in real time as they saw potential issues. And there was just an unwillingness. Players being different, as it were, when you see that record, if someone were to show me a record that the county were to do, have done something wrong, even if it was previous administrators, I would have to own that and say, okay, it may not have been on my watch, but if we did something wrong and we have to bring people to the table to try to resolve it. That's why I was a bit shocked that on behalf of the CAC, we got a letter saying that we don't believe the insurance is applicable. And to me, okay, but.
That's your problem.
Exactly. And, and because the board made the decision to approach this in a spirit of good faith, try with new players to come to a place of agreement before we went to the legal route, which was your prerogative to do from the outset. You could have pulled that trigger months back when we got this notification, and that would be further down. So I think that it is in everyone's interest to make sure we've learned the lessons, but also to have the proof in the pudding of this is what it looks like now. To have Brandon at the table advising the board on what's, are there any other changes we need to make to our contract monitoring? And then to continue to work on the relationship with CAC to see if we can get this issue resolved and then get them in a place where they can be in good standing again.
Yeah, I would like to see that because of all the, you know, this situation illustrates that there aren't that many groups out there to help us do the work that we're trying to do. And so it's, you know, all of our interest to kind of repair and move forward, but it has to be some, you know. Anyway, Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, speaking to the internal auditor, I mean, he's made it very clear that, like, this area where it's the, these, these nonprofits, these subrecipients first, specifically these dollars are, like, are, those are where the biggest red flags are. That's where he sees some of the, the, the worst opportunities for fraud. So, and, and, you know, so like, yes, red flags then, but also like, just saying, well, there, you know, there's only one place in the community that does it, and, you know, what they're doing is some good. That we still, I mean, that's kind of, I understand, like, yes, there's people that need to be helped, but we have to make sure that it's done right. Where that's like our, you know, we have a, we have a very strict duty to ensure that the public dollars are done exactly how they're allotted. You know, even if a little bit of good is done and, you know, we can't have an acceptable amount of fraud. But there's also other, like, types of contracting models that we could consider, like, social impact bonds, where it's, you know, and I don't understand it completely, but it's like, it's an alternative contract model where you pay based on results. So we wouldn't be asking them for information like, like you're saying that they wouldn't give us before, but we'd be essentially paying for results that they, they, they do the activities first and then they come to us for reimbursement.
Commissioner Grant?
Well, and I, I will just say, kind of, I think we've probably talked about it enough at this point. But, you know, one of the, so I'm just going to use the example that's happening in Shelton right now. Then in Mason County, their shelter is being closed down because Community Lifeline forgot to pay its taxes, is employment, their employment taxes. And, and they, their board, and, I mean, it is a consistent and common knowledge in the behavioral health and the, in the health and human services community that, that the administrative and the infrastructure of nonprofits need support. You know, they, we've got people who, who, you know, might be, you know, volunteering, but, you know, and, you know, other, I've seen in other counties where, you know, they offer technical support to the providers. You know, at the state, when we were monitoring all the contracts we gave to you guys, we had somebody internally, not an auditor, but we had our own risk person go out and check the subrecipient monitoring for ourselves before the auditor went out and around to make sure that everyone's spending the money on the things they said they'd spend the money on. Because, you know, it's going to come back on us. And so I'm just really interested in, and I know this has nothing to do with this, but really as a, as a group for us to be figuring out processes and policies that are in place that really protect us. But at the same time, also, we need these providers to, you know, Mason County is losing thirty beds. I mean, that's shutting down. There's, you know who's going to, who their impact is going to be? It's going to be on us, that those people are going to come to Olympia. They're shut down right now, you know? And, and so there's really a need too for us to be able to partner with each of these nonprofits to make sure that they have the, the people that they need in order for them to accept the funding and continue to provide the services that we need in the county. So just to keep that in mind, you know, if there's ever a way we can move forward with, with helping to make sure this doesn't happen again for them, that'd be great.
So what's our, the county manager, what's, how do you think we should go forward from this, given where the board's at?
This was a briefing. I think we, staff will need to bring the RHC's recommendations forward because that's, that's the process, and then you will have to vote yes or no. And in the no vote, then it goes back to them for consideration. I do want to thank our Public Health Director, Dr. Jen Frey, who brought this at a very high level, brought this up to the subcommittee that was discussing it and RHC, just so they understood that there were some considerations that the county would have to look into. We didn't say which way those considerations would go, but just simply flagging it. So it was an awareness factor.
Just given these dollars, there is a timeline. So if it's decided in June not to fund these three contracts with CAC, then the, then the RHC has to meet and determine, there has to be time to find another organization, to your point, of who can handle these populations and take on this work. They would be brand new, so it, it would significantly delay. So that is part of the reason why we were coming today is to get a sense of, do we go back to RHC now as opposed to waiting until July?
So because we can take action, if you'd like to give direction to staff to send this back to the, that's the board's will, to RHC, that would help them have more runway to figure out how they're going to either do another call out, get these funds appropriately allocated.
I mean, I, I feel like, hearing that, you know, we really didn't have a second applicant, then for me, my next step would want to, I'd like to have Brandon and/or prosecuting attorney look the eyeball, look the board in the eyeballs and say, changes have been made from what happened in twenty twenty-one. These provisions of the contract have been altered, tightened. You can feel confident that you're not going to have, I mean, you, we can't say they would, you know, be perfect with the contract, but if they weren't perfect with the contract, you can be sure that we're not going to have a repeat of that. I'd want to feel, before I was ready to sign off, I would need to see those eyeballs from that.
I'd actually just, sorry.
Yeah, respond to that, and then I'll go to the Commissioner.
I'll just say, we have been working with Brandon and the prosecutor, or have been reviewing our contracts and updating our contracts literally as we speak.
I'd like to see, I mean, you can tell me that, but I'd like him to go, here's what it said, and here's what it says now. I want to see the tightening. You know, like, that's what I'd like to make me, give me a comfort level that I don't have right now. Commissioner Mejia, and then Commissioner Fornier?
That, and I would actually like to send it back to the RHC to look for other options at the same time because maybe we don't have our ducks in a row by that time and, like, inside. And I would want the RHC to have enough time. Maybe there wasn't another applicant, but it gives staff the ability to start having touch points with different organizations and be like, is there anyone else who would be interested if, you know? And I would want staff to have that time instead of then, you know, us going through the whole process, hearing back that from the PAO and internal auditor, hey, that actually might not be a good thing, and then having to rush things through. So I would think those things can be peril if.
So a message to the RHC that there are concerns from the board. We're trying to shore up those concerns, but be on notice. You may need to find an alternative. Commissioner Fornier?
And I think that kind of plays into what, what I, what I want to understand. And it's, you know, like, so the RHC has set their, what they have set out and said what their funding priorities are. And then RFPs went out to come back to fund, fund the things that they said were important. But has there been a message from us saying the things that we know are important? And, you know, and I'm naive to a lot of this, but, you know, like, my concern is that there are, there are liabilities and contracts that we already have that are relying on state funding, and that state funding may not exist anymore. And I want to understand better, like, the, what those contracts are with, with Lehigh or, or what, what have you, all that right-of-way money that came in that supposedly, you know, is dwindling or disappearing. Like, you know, my, my question to everybody or to whoever, you know, is able to inform us of that is, like, what, what is their potential for us to be left holding the bag with and not having any funding that this? that this, this, these home fund dollars could or should be used for? And we would be the ones saying, you know, hey, RHC, this is the priority. The county has this, this massive, you know, ledge that they're, they're walking towards. I, I would want that, is that, is that message carried on somewhere? County manager or, or Tom or Jen or?
I think that the next conversation, the next agenda item, Commissioner Fornier, is a great segue into the broader conversation as we look at right of way funding. But I do know that Public Health is working with the budget team on identifying the impacts to loss of funding. And we look to have something to come back and talk to you about that in detail soon.
So then, yeah, like if there's a, if there, if there's a black hole out there, I would wanna pull back some of this money that the RHC is wanting to obligate.
Well, I think that the challenge here is within Public Health and Social Services, there's a lot of different streams of funding and some can pay for some things and some can pay for other things. And so to Commissioner Mahia's request, we are working on an overview of all the different funding streams in public health so that we can lay that out and have that conversation with, here's all the funding streams, here's what we know is going away, and then give a high level view and then allow the board to dig in and talk with staff about, well, where do we think things need to go?
But the funding that the RHC advises on is, is the home fund dollars, correct? And that's, that's largely available for a wide variety of things.
Tom and Jen, you want to speak to that?
So the RHC makes recommendations on several different funding sources. One of them is the local home fund. Of that, 60% is for capital funds, 30% can go for services. There's other state dollars, the consolidated homeless grant, housing and essential needs. There's also document recording fees. So there's probably seven or eight different fund sources that the RHC is making recommendations on.
Okay, thank you.
This may be like, I'll get, so this may be ahead of the game, but since we have the example of that high risk organization and CAC not wanting to sign that contract, like Josh said, well, we haven't gotten to that point because it kind of, well, maybe we need to look at that. I mean, if, if we're thinking to go forward with them and, and our auditor is gonna, or whoever was, was gonna insist on that and they're not gonna sign it, then maybe it's a moot point. The new, the new leadership may not know that that's gonna be in the contract and they don't, and if they weren't willing to sign it last time and if it's gonna need to be in there for whatever reason and they're not gonna be willing to sign it, then maybe this is all a moot point.
Yeah, and I guess that's where we're looking for your direction right at this point, you know? Do you want us to engage with negotiations with CAC and see if there's a path forward or not? Do you want us to look out and see if we can sole source these funds to another agency? Should we go out and issue another RFP to see if there's multiple agencies that want to bid for that? So I think recognizing the difficult situation kind of with CAC, that's, you know, appreciate your guidance on whether that's, we didn't want to reach out to CAC to start a contract negotiation.
We were gonna.
That wasn't gonna go anywhere. We didn't, so.
No, I'm glad you guys brought this forward, so thank you.
Yeah, I mean, can we do both? Oh, sorry, you go.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I, a lot of the things people are saying or answering some, I'm trying to like rapidly write down all my questions. But Tom, what you just said kind of hits the nail on the head in terms of what I was thinking. And that's, you know, as the Chair of RHC, I'm trying to think through what these conversations might look like when we do go back to the RHC. And I'm wondering, are we looking for these funds to go to an ERP program elsewhere? Are we looking to ask the Homeless Services Advisory Board and the other one, the Lived Experience Housing Steering Committee? Are we looking for them to go back to the whole pool of applicants and pull from something else that may be a different program? So those are some clarifying questions I would wanna know too, like you were just mentioning. And then in terms of Commissioner Fornier's, he made a couple of comments that I thought were really good. And kind of addresses like, so you mentioned like the, the risk of losing some dollars because of the impact at the state or federal levels, which is a good point. And Commissioner Mahia wrote a letter to RHC not too long ago, kind of making sure they're aware that we're proceeding with caution on some of our funding choices. And the RHC did discuss some of those risks, risks of funding gaps at a recent meeting. And I remember some of that conversation, you know, that staff are actively monitoring risks to our funding at the local level because of what's happening at higher levels. So I know that the RHC is working on, or, you know, there are staff that are aware of those issues and actively monitoring those to make sure we're not committing funds that we're not gonna have. And what else did I have? So two more things. One, I wanted to do a really quick plug for the RHC newsletter because some of those questions about where funding comes from are actually answered in the newsletter, which I think is really cool. So props to staff for putting something like that together if you're not subscribed already. And then the last thing I wanted to say is, I wanna acknowledge that when we get recommendations from the Regional Housing Council, it's not just the Regional Housing Council putting those recommendations forward. It's our advisory boards with people with lived experience that go through these applications, which we've all acknowledged is a really, really difficult process. We've seen it with like the TST board, you know? These are not easy conversations to have. And we have community representatives that have lived experience that have gone through all these applications and made some really tough choices. And those people with lived experience have different perspectives than some of us might have as, you know, policymakers and stewards of public funds. But, you know, those people with lived experience might have a different perspective about why this is important to move forward or, and I can't speak for them, but that's just something I wanted to make sure the board is aware of because for me, that's, that weighs really heavily on my decision with not just this, but everything is, you know, I wanna listen to the voices of people who have lived through that experience. And so just, I didn't know if the full board is aware that that's kind of how those funding recommendations come down the line and end up with us, so.
Sure, if I may, the RHC will, in the recommendation, have a number, is it like 20 different recommendations to?
Fifty.
Oh, fifty, excuse me. So what we're talking about here is the ones that are identifying the CAC, which are how many, three?
Three.
Three. So just for the sake of conversation focusing, it would be great to give staff direction, what you want us to do with those three so that as Jen and Tom work with the RHC, they are, they understand that if we're not gonna support or we want to look at other options or we wanna go back out, they have time to do that before June. And being that we're at the end of April, time is of the essence.
Commissioner Grant and then Commissioner Fornier.
Quick question, does Community Action Council currently hold the eviction funding?
Pipe?
No.
No, it's pipe, so it will switch. Oh, okay. All right, well, I, I just wanna make my recommendation and I think I'm, I'm comfortable with Commissioner Mahia's recommendation of, I think that we should ask them to revisit this. And, but at the same time, encourage information from our PAO and get a better understanding. And I'm like, Ty, I wanna see it. I wanna see it, hold it and, and understand any of the changes that we've made. And then if for some reason, you know, we come back to no one else applies or there's no other availability after discussions, then maybe we reconsider based on the information we have.
Can I add just for internal auditor?
Yeah.
PAO and internal auditor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and internal.
And Commissioner Fornier, if I could, just real quick, on Commissioner Klaus's point, this is maybe what you were asking, but I guess I just wonder, if we do what Commissioner Mahia suggests, and you, you, you said, well, I wonder how that conversation looks like at the RHC? And I'm wondering too, because they don't know all the his, like, they're not personally invested, right? Like if I'm sitting there from City of Tomater.
They do.
You know? I mean, they may have seen it in the newspaper, but they didn't go through the difficulty. I mean, we had a, I mean, I don't want them to go through the history, but Commissioner Mahia knows what I'm talking about, where we had a Zoom to try, with all the nonprofits, the nonprofits went to war against the county. They worked together. They were saying, don't ever contract with the county. The county is out to destroy all nonprofits in Thurston County. We set up a Zoom meeting with all the leaders of nonprofits. It was not a productive meeting. I mean, this is deep in our hearts, like we're scarred from this. So I just want you to, I mean, I just, to say that like, you know, we'll send it back to the RHC and like, I don't want them to think the county commissioners are just being petty or they don't, you know, they don't, they're not scarred, so I just don't know how that's gonna resonate with them. I don't wanna, I, I want the RHC to respect what we're saying here and understand why we're saying it. We don't take it lightly and do what it is that we want them to do, which is, you know, with the information and not draw wrong conclusions and go sideways with it. So I just, I thought that's just a concern I have, not knowing what this conversation looks like once we, because we've never done this. We've never rejected an RHC recommendation since we set up the RHC, to my knowledge.
And I think we have two very powerful resources in that Commissioner Klaus is the Chair. And take this conversation and deliver it back to the intent. We're not just being willy nilly or, you know.
Retaliatory.
Right, no, this is, we have to look out for those interests. And we also have staff who appreciate their time and flexibility to get this in last, you know, with short notice. The importance of it can also help deliver that message. So we have two envoys going to deliver what we are talking about versus what we're not talking about. And again, it is our hope that we can work through this and repair our relationship with CAC and be a benefit to all nonprofits as we want them to be a benefit to our communities.
Commissioner Fornier?
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, to reiterate, I, I'm not wanting to, I, I'm not in favor of joining any contracts with CAC until we figure out what our relationship is from here on out. And then I, I appreciate what Commissioner Klaus said and then Commissioner Mensah, I think, kind of stole my thoughts a little bit. I, I think we all have our experiences and, you know, we're all living and we all have our experiences and we, you know, we, we get information from all different places and so we sit and advise different elements. And if, you know, if we're gonna kick back a recommendation, that's not us not listening to citizen advisory groups from different experience points in the community. That's us sitting at the table we sit at and having the information we have and using the experience that we're living to make our own advisement. But, and, and so like, that's kind of the way I see it. It's, it's a collaborative effort. And then my, you know, my, my projecting out and worrying about, you know, the cliff, it's not just worrying about obligating funding that, that might not come. I'm also worried about obligations we already have, like, you know, like something like a maple court. And is that funding that's going towards that no longer gonna exist? I wanna figure out what obligations we're already bound to that, 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 that funding may disappear before we really throw any more money at any, any new programs. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Klaus?
I just wanna respond to that real quick. I didn't really, I didn't mean to imply that we'd be sending a message back that we don't care about what the advisory boards say. So I appreciate you making that point, Commissioner Fornier, because that's not at all. I mean, like the county manager said, we have good avenues of communication to where I think that message could be delivered with the care that it deserves. You know, we're not just sitting here saying, no, we don't care. That's not at all how I think that the message would be delivered. But I also wanna acknowledge that when we're saying lived experience, it's a really specific term that acknowledges the traumas that people have endured in experiences of being unhoused. People who have, you know, been impacted by serious mental illness or substance use disorder that has contributed to an experience of homelessness or, you know, lower socioeconomic status as a barrier to housing. And those are the experiences that I'm talking about when I say lived experience. We all, as you said, you're right, we all have our own experiences that we live. And we're sitting here at this table because we, like I said, are stewards of public funds and we have to uphold that as, you know, the most important thing that we are here to do. But I think that there is a path forward, at least in terms of communication, as long as we leave here today with everyone understanding what the next steps are. And Commissioner Fornier mentioned something earlier that I thought was really interesting, which the social impact bonds thing. And maybe that's just a one model and there's something else, you know, that we could look, look at. But that was interesting to me to maybe consider something that's more like based on results and a reimbursement, you know, mechanism rather than paying upfront. I don't know what our contracts look like or if that's even possible, but I thought that was a really smart idea to maybe consider like, I mean, if the board decides, hey, we really, really want like the ERP thing for single adults, seniors and veterans to be where this money goes, how do we do that with or without contracting with this group? But, I mean, maybe whether it's this group or anyone, it seems like because these are high risk endeavors and opportunities for fraud that maybe are more common than I might know, it, it would be good to kind of understand like if a reimbursement model is something that could work for a contract like this. I thought that was a really good idea.
We can research options and come back to the board with what's possible in that framework.
Okay.
And I'll say, all of our contracts are reimbursement based contracts.
Oh, okay.
So, and that's been one of the challenges, to be honest, with Pipe is smaller organizations don't have the financial capacity to make ten, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars of rent payments and then wait for reimbursement. So, and organizations.
We were behind TC Connect, right? Some of those payments.
Got even more delayed, yeah.
Which is hurting some of the crews.
That happened in King County too, just the normal, it's like way behind, yeah.
So I wonder, can you restate the two actions?
Yeah, so we recommend staff to take the three applications for the CAC back to the RHC for reconsideration. And realizing that there's close to 50 that are gonna be moving forward. And then coming back to the board with the PAO and the internal auditor to talk about where we're at with the CAC, but also where we're at with contracting in general. And I'll work with staff to do a matrix of where were we in our contracts? Where are we today? So we can see improvements.
Thumb up, Commissioner Fornier? All right, it sounds like we have all thumbs. Since it's Commissioner's idea, I'm gonna imply, I'm gonna implicitly say her thumbs up.
Do you have the direction you need?
So I'll say, the next RHC meeting is not until the end of May. So we may work with you to send out an email to RHC members.
Okay.
Communicate, that's okay.
Perfect, yeah, that sounds great.
Okay. Good on that topic. Moving forward then to item three, 25, 2025, 26, right of way initiative funding update.
Again, Commissioners, this is in response to the changing landscape with funding I received from the state. I wanna thank Tom for his work. He put together a sheet that shows a couple scenarios that I'll hand over to him to talk through. I understand that some of this conversation has been having with some of our stakeholder partners as well. This is the sheet that I'm referring to. It's the spreadsheet that has the header with the green column. And with that, Tom, I'll hand over you.
Yeah, so, kind of as you know, we've been receiving right of way money for the, for the past several years. That money is shared between money that comes directly to Thurston County, also the City of Olympia receives money directly under the right of way initiative. This was the proposal for right of way initiative projects. Initially came through the Regional Housing Council in response to an RFP from, from the state. So currently for, for operating dollars for projects that are considered right of way projects, which is also now known as the ERP project or the encampment resolution program. So we use both interchangeably since it's, most folks know it as ROB, but it's, it shifts to ERP. Just over nine and a half million dollars across a variety of projects. What we've been told to anticipate, and the last I saw in the, in the state budget, it was both in the House and the Senate budget, was a forty five million, forty five billion dollar allocation for the state for this program. We have been told if that holds, that the, our county share would be approximately five and a half billion dollars of funding under right of way. Obviously, we'll have to wait and see what the final budget numbers come out to be. In doing so, we have been told that Department of Commerce would want us to prioritize those projects that they put capital dollars into. So our expectation is, once the budget is approved, we will receive a request for proposals from the state indicating our allocation and asking us as a region how we want to allocate those funds. And so we would expect that we'll be needing to submit a proposal to Commerce proposing kind of how we want to allocate our share of, of projects. So what I've, here is, is listed the projects that are currently being funded, the agency, a brief description, whether those projects are funded through Thurston County or the City of Olympia. City of Olympia and their current budget. There have been discussions with City of Olympia and City of Lacey staff concerning this, if we had the five and a half million dollars, what would be a possible way to allocate those funds? So we've presented one scenario here. There's been no decisions on this, just discussions. I will say City of Olympia has expressed interest in using some of the funds to support their outreach staff so they can continue engage with those who may be on state's rights of way and referring folks into housing. So that is something City of Olympia has expressed. The, the projects that have received capital funding from the state are Sandy's Flats, which is the old Olympia Inn, which is a twenty-six unit hotel that is now being used for permanent housing operated by Interfaith Works, Maple Court, which is operated by Lehigh. Lehigh received funding directly from the state to acquire that, so Lehigh owns that building. And then the other is the Franz Anderson Tiny Home Village, which is currently operated by Olympia Mutual Aid Partners. So those are the three projects that, from our understanding from the state, that the state would be interested in us prioritizing for continued operations since the state put capital dollars into those, those projects. Yeah. So at this point, we also know that the Plum Street Village is, City of Olympia is looking to probably close that project at the end of this year. They've sold that property. So we anticipate losing those, those tiny home beds whether or not we receive, you know, sufficient right-of-way money for that project. I know there's, continues to be lobbying advocacy efforts to, from King County and other right-of-way communities to advocate for full funding for this. We'll see where that, that goes. So at this point, this is really just a, a starting point for discussion. My expectation would be, once we get a final number from Commerce that through the Regional Housing Council, because City of Lacey has an interest in the Maple Court properties, City of Olympia has some of these projects, that there would be a recommendation coming through the Regional Housing Council once we receive a final budget and the priorities from the state. Would be my expect, is my current thought, but open for kind of other thoughts and feedback and hearing what the board's priorities are.
Tom, this will come, come, if they make the recommendations, this will come before the board for final decision?
Yeah.
And is it a thumbs up or thumbs down, or does the board, how does that work?
So we would come, we would be getting, expecting a contract from the Department of Commerce, that we would come and ask them for board approval to sign that contract with the revenue. And then whatever contracts we issued from that revenue would also come before the board for approval.
So looking at the proposal in terms of what would not be able to be funded, it looks like the biggest gap is Unity Commons.
Correct. And that is, there is a large, they had a, they were anticipating, I think, at least a reduction in right-of-way money, so they came into our, the RFP process that we're just talking about and made a pretty substantial ask. And so there's gonna be a pretty substantial funding recommendation coming under the, I would say, the regular homeless service dollars.
Well, it's good then, that we were a little ahead of that.
And it's not as much as they would like. You know, we are receiving, anticipating a reduction in state funding. So all of the projects that we've been funding and there's, Unity Commons has been receiving funding under that effort as well. So it's been a braided funding because they've set aside basically half of their beds for right-of-way and the other half were paid for our normal homeless response system dollars.
So there is an increase from the, on the, on the non, on the non-right-of-way side, they're gonna be recommended for more money, but not as much as they'd like, or not enough to cover the one point one million or?
Right, so I think that the total amount that currently they would be funding is less than they're currently receiving. So it's an increase of what they're receiving under kind of the consolidated homeless grant, but it's an overall decrease when you combine the two pots of money.
Understood. So, I mean, that stands out, obviously. That's just a project I know about. I don't actually know what New Hope Village is.
New Hope Village is there are six tiny homes under First Christian Church.
Oh, yeah, okay, I know what that is. That's three hundred thousand. And then we've got outreach activities, which, you know, you cannot do outreach activities, I guess, you know, they're important.
The expectation is that the right-of-way program, there will not be any new right-of-way sites under the state initiative. It will just be funding to maintain existing projects. So the thought was there would not need to be continued outreach. It would be ideal if we could have outreach, but there will not be new right-of-way sites that would require new outreach.
So, and then hotel stays, families from right-of-way, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like maybe the, is Unity, I don't know, I'm just asking, is Unity Commons gap, is that the one project that's really at risk if this five point five is what ends up coming out? Because, I mean, there's a certain point, I mean, I, I would imagine running a hard facility like that, like, there aren't a lot of, you know, frivolous costs, right? Like, there's a certain amount you need to run it or else it has to close up.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, I don't wanna speak for Interfaith Works. I think you're correct that Unity Commons is one in terms of whether we have sufficient resources to fully fund Unity Commons to the, the level. I would like to see this as a challenge, as a concern.
Other questions from the board?
No, I mean, I'll just comment that this is, you know, I think this is a really well-thought-out. I think this is a good proposal, so, nice job.
If we have to, I mean, I don't know how the RHC did this. Commissioner Klaus, maybe you can tell us, but like, how did they? I mean, we still don't know exactly what the budget's gonna say, right? So how did they sort of juggle that, like, uncertainty about what we're gonna get with what, meaning to say that if we all, like, let's say Unity Commons needed five million and, you know, they used to get five million and now it's four million. If that's the situation, would RHC wanna revisit something or, you know what I mean, to like make sure that?
Yes.
Because they had to make recommendations, it sounds like, or a lot of the work in advance of knowing the final budget from the state. This is a kind of a big unknown.
Yeah. Yeah, and I kind of, and I know Commissioner Hee has her hand up, too, but I, just briefly, I kind of alluded to it earlier that we had some of these conversations at one of the RHC meetings and, and I know that, you know, this is an example of staff keeping their eye on, you know, and bringing forward to us information on what's happening with the dollars at the state and federal level. But in terms of like specifics of a conversation that might, you know, come up when this comes back up at the RHC, I'm not sure if I really recall the details of.
Yeah, we have not presented this proposal to the RHC yet. So this has kind of been at a staff level discussion, what are, what's an option in preparation for, once we get the final budget from, from Commerce.
A staff level discussion with our partners.
With our partners.
I'm just saying, they had to know something in order to bump up, you said they bumped up Unity Commons allocation, so they had to know there was a reason to do that.
Yeah, so through the, so Thurston, Interfaith Works, when they submitted their application through the RFP, put in kind of for the full ask. And so the Homeless Services Advisory Board, as they were looking at that application, kind of saw a full ask for that. And they said, okay, how much of this full ask can we, can we fund?
Because it may have not known about the R, the right-of-way, it just happened that way.
They knew it at a, at a high level, that there's right-of-way money and there's likely gonna be less right-of-way money.
Interfaith Works knew that.
Interfaith Works.
So they put in for a higher ask. That's how it got bumped up.
Yeah, but I mean, the question is now, once we know the state number, what can be done to make the right adjustment? The RHC might have wanted to, to make sure Unity Commons was funded and they just didn't know what number to put in, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I just wanna make sure we don't miss the opportunity process-wise to, to get the project supported that we wanna support, just because we have this variable of the state's, you know, not, we, dangling this money that we don't know what's coming.
I think you're right. We don't know what we don't know, but the staff wanted to make sure that we're looking out for it.
Yeah, and I think, sorry, this has been a, a really challenging funding year because we are anticipating less money from the states and even from document recording fees. And so Unity Commons, other things that we funded, you know, family sports center projects, community youth services projects, safe place projects have all, it's, may receive less funding than they received in the past because we just have less money to fund our system than we've had in past years.
Commissioner Hee, go ahead.
Thanks. And I just wanna thank the tech team, I wanna thank you, Tom, for all the work that's gone into it. I know I've been pretty squeaky about this since last December, when I saw that it was not in the initial governor's budget. And I really appreciate the work that you and the staff from the other jurisdictions have done to kind of prepare for this. I know you guys are meeting with the DOC, Department of Commerce, pretty frequently and are checking in with all of the organizations that are involved. And so I, I am more comfortable moving forward with this approach, so I just wanted to give you a big thanks because I know there's been a lot of work and organization that has gone into this whole process. And, you know, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that, you know, we finally crossed the finish line on this, but, you know, just, I think the proposal that you have forward is, definitely puts me in a more comfortable position.
Commissioner Fornier.
Yeah, I just wanna say thank you, too. This is, you know, this is, I think this is a big concern. I, I recognize these are still moving targets and, you know, these assumptions may change, but, you know, I, I, I respect the, the, the information and this is, this is helpful for me, thank you.
Commissioner Grant.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that, you know, just wanted to pop in, kind of thinking about what you're, the questions that you're asking, Ty, which are, really speak to why we have a regional housing council, right? And that, and that the importance of fluctuating funding sources across our health and human services system are, are consistent. So like Department of Commerce might get more money one year and then the state will have less money. And then, you know, but, but they all work in court in tandem. And what really impresses me is that we've got staff that are, you know, plugged in and are watching all of these different things. And then they're able to be able to say, well, because we know they're gonna get a little bit more money on one side, that maybe we don't need, this is something we can do. And, and so I just, I think that that, that's why we have the Regional Housing Council because we really hope that we'll be, we should, as a county, should really be facilitating regional, like, coordination of, hey, we can give less here because something else is happening here. And, and I think that's what you're doing, so I appreciate that.
Turning dials.
Yeah, turning dials, yep.
Well, I just, if I, if it wasn't clear from all my questions, like, I wanna see Unity Commons, like, you know, that's a beautiful major success story project right up the street, so like, we gotta figure out how to, you know, get them where they need to be. And, you know, if that means RHC going back to the, turning a few dials after we get the state budget, you know, then, then that should happen.
That's where the behavioral health system also kind of inches in there and that's why it's such important that we, we start to bring these bridges together because Unity Commons and these permanent supportive housing units have the ability to draw down funding that's outside the housing funding. You know, they have the ability to draw down operational funding that comes from Medicaid and comes from, you know, and so that's what, that's what permanent supportive housing was originally, the idea was that, you know, it shouldn't just be the state and the federal government paying for what we call a social determinant of health, it should be the insurance companies that pay for these things that people need when they're in, needing to be supported, living in permanent supportive housing. So that's the other reason that I think that's really important as we move forward and we collaborate, that we be thinking about how, what are the other funding things that could come in and help Unity Commons fill the gaps that we lose in the housing system, so. But behavioral health and Thurston Mason BHO, you know, also are working on things like that.
Chair, just a time check, I think we had this scheduled from one to two.
Oh.
Yeah, sorry, it's not our normal till three, is that correct?
Correct. Does anybody have a hard stop?
I do at like two forty-five.
Okay, so, does anyone have a burning report on an external board they would like to give? Otherwise, we can kind of go over that. I see nothing from Commissioner Fornier.
Thank you for both being here.
Thank you, PHSS.
Thank you.
Okay, then we've just got the last then-commissioner item, which is the executive aid supervisory matrix.
Yeah, Chair, that's an item that we kind of left hanging, I think Commissioner Klaus had it down schemed. So, whether that is at in the discussion, because we could have a discussion about it. Reap and pay human resource directors here. I think that some of the question was to ask our legal team if there was any issue with that type of structure. We did ask the question and there is no legal issue with that kind of structure. It really is just an idea for the board's consideration. It's not something that either the director or me as county manager are pushing. I know that, so that's really back to you to see, we just wanted to follow up, there is no recommended action unless the board wants to take action.
Commissioner Fornier, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. To me, this is a hard one because it's like, you know, like I, like, you know, this has been a process for everybody and, and going through it, you know, I, we're not, I don't think we're at the same place we necessarily were a year ago, but at the same time, you know, I, of course, still have concerns and reservations. I, I don't know that there's a practical way to make sense of a secondary supervisory model. And some of my concerns have been met by Commissioner Klaus, working with HR to ensure that like a, a clean hiring process occurred. And I heard nothing but good things about that from some of the folks that sat on the panel. There were some good applicants and, and I believe that, like, you know, you know, and I, and I, I thank Commissioner Klaus for like, understanding why it's important, but, you know, we can all say that a, a hiring process has occurred and, you know, somebody was, was picked through a, you know, a fair process and they're, you know, they have no personal relationship with anyone, you know, in any way that would cause any type of concerns for a, a type of unprofessional situation. So like, like that type of thing, allowing that kind of process has allayed some of my concerns, for what, for what that's worth.
Okay, well, I mean, for me, I, I mean, I, I think there's, I didn't really wanna get too involved in this, it was, for me, it was between Commissioner Klaus and, and HR, I mean, so I don't know what she's, I don't know what you would like to see. I mean, I don't think it would be bad to have an assistant county manager at a kind of a high level where the person could check in monthly or just kind of, how's it going? Do you feel appropriate scheduling and assignments? But the day-to-day, I, to me, is too much. I don't, maybe that's what Commissioner Fornier was getting at. I don't, I don't think the assistant county manager should be doing performance evaluation or overseeing day-to-day operation, which is what this is on this matrix. So I, this matrix, to me, is too aggressive, but, but I could see, you know, I could see a scaled-back version of it being workable, but I guess Commissioner Klaus, it'd be kind of your call from my perspective.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And, yeah, Commissioner Fornier kind of ended his statement with like, for what it's worth. And I will say, like, hearing that some of your concerns have been alleviated is worth a lot to me because that's the first time I've heard you say that and it really does mean a lot because repairing some of the relationships here is important to me. In terms of a dual supervisory matrix, I don't think that we need that. I feel really confident moving forward that through this hiring process that we went through with HR, a really strong candidate has been selected and I'm really excited to move forward with that. And, and if it's okay to share, that she'll be starting May twenty-seventh.
Gotta assign.
Yeah.
Be twenty-seventh?
Yep. She's out of the country now, getting out of the army and, yeah, so I'm really excited, though, that's why there's a little bit of a delay. But I think a strong candidate's been selected. I really appreciate the support that I've had through the process in making sure, you know, some of the boxes were checked through like the lens of HR, which I think has been valuable. I've worked with Ashley for a couple months now and we've had a really great working relationship and I feel confident that moving forward, you know, this person will be set up for success. And I'm still working through the trainings that HR provided, I think I only have one more left, and I'm still registering for other trainings that weren't on the list of recommendations. Thanks to the county manager and the clerk of the board for taking my influx of requests for training registrations that I've sent their way. I've had a lot of opportunity to learn tons of stuff, so, in my opinion. So in my opinion, I don't think a dual supervisory structure of any kind is necessary at this time. And in terms of having like, an assistant county manager to check in with, I don't think that's a bad idea for all executive aides. I think I said something similar to that last time. It would be good for all of our EAs to have somebody, whether it's an assistant county manager or someone in HR, that they could go to as like a touch point if there are any issues. I think that would be really valuable. But I don't think that having, you know, that sort of system, even if it's really informal for just one person, I think that that might cause some problems or maybe, yeah, make someone feel like their relationship is different in some way. And I just don't want to put anyone in a situation where they are wondering why they have this something that's different. So that's where I'm at with it.
I think that we're happy to move on. And, you know, I think the aides always have... they're part of the organization, so they always have HR to reach out to if there are any issues. And we can just move forward that way.
Okay.
One last item, unless there's any more discussion on that point.
So, just to be clear, so we're just saying that when... I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're saying, we're just gonna move forward without dual supervision?
Correct.
Perfect.
Right. We just wanted to give a quick update on Bring Your Child to Work Day for commissioners.
Yes.
It should take about less than 20 seconds.
Yeah. So tomorrow is Thurston County's 2025 Take Your Child to Work Day. We currently have an RCPS... Sorry, registration has closed. And so we have about 50 staff members who have registered for a total of about 100 children. So we will have a packed house tomorrow. It will be busy and loud, but it will be great. So just to recap...
Are they all gonna be doing the same track?
So we'll start off sort of on the same track.
And we're all assigned 25.
Yeah. Change of class size.
You know, I had to be here. I was like, what?
I'm bringing my five alone.
So the children will be welcomed downstairs in the morning and directed towards our office to clock in. They will take photos for their badge with Polaroids and write their name on them. They will get a Take Your Child to Work Day lanyard and a bag for the day that has a lot of information and little things in them.
They're checking in at 8:30?
8:30 AM.
Commissioner Fornier will already have been checked in at 8, so he'll be right there.
I had a comment ready. You beat me.
Commissioner Mihia? Before I interrupted Amy, but did you have something on that?
No, Amy can finish.
Okay. Go ahead, Amy.
So we'll have the hallway lined from our lobby area in our office to the central services lobby. It'll be lined with smiling faces and folks making sure people stay on the path. They'll come downstairs and then come to the auditor's office to pick up their passport for the day. Passport includes various activities and stops along the way where staff members will stamp them in. We will do a mock election in the auditor's office for Thurston County's 2025 official ice cream flavor. There's a few options for...
Banana, I hope.
There's not banana.
You don't get to vote.
Ride it! I'm gonna go to all the kids and get a riding campaign going. You'd want to do an advisory vote.
From there, we will come in here where the ballots will be brought in, ballots will be counted in front of the children. And so once we have the winning flavor, we will conduct the mock board meeting. And so if you're here, please join us down here at 9:30 for that. The children will be facilitating the meeting as commissioners and county managers with the help of volunteers who are here and any of you.
There's gonna be a chair of the board, right?
Yes, there will be a chair, vice chair.
And who... how do they get selected for that?
They are selected randomly by stickers on the back of their badge in the morning.
Nice, so be...
Yeah. That allows us to kind of balance the ages.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's cool.
After the board meeting, we will do the proclamation presentation for the ice cream flavor. We will all head to the stairs to take a photo with all of the children.
Man, just like a real commissioner.
Yes.
Can we... so can we walk the line tomorrow morning? And can I give them candy to hype them all up? Or no, and we're not allowed... I was like, man, because I feel like an aunt. I can just make them all crazy, then send them off with you.
That's me, that's what I'm doing tomorrow.
I give them all a positive potato.
As long as it kicks in after the board meeting.
Nope.
From the board meeting, we'll head upstairs to the HR training room area and out on the hallway upstairs where various departments and offices will be stationed with tables and activities. They'll get lots of stamps there in their passports. And after that, we'll have a lunch hour to travel to the courthouse campus where we will meet in Superior Court to put Goldilocks on trial.
So cool.
Yes. Judge Murphy has taken that on and is very excited. She loves doing this. And after the trial, we will head to the open parking area for that touch truck event. So we'll have Public Works there, Marshall and Sky, a K-9 unit, intercity transit's bus, a drone exhibition, so it will be very cool.
Dogs, Commissioner Mihia, dogs. Did you hear that?
Dogs. All the dogs.
It's now the parents driving.
All the dogs.
Yes.
Oh, boy, okay.
All right. Well, thank you so much. I mean, I haven't seen it yet, but just from what I heard and with all the preparation, it sounds like it's gonna be the best one ever, so you guys just kick butt on this.
And it will be the first one for this new, reimagined format. So next year will be even bigger and better.
Commissioner Mihia, go ahead.
Thank you. I just really want to give a shout-out to staff. I've been attending... I've attended some of the planning meetings. And just the planning and coordination that's gone into this from every single department and elected office that is participating has been a lot. And, you know, like, Taylor right now is upstairs cutting badges, getting ready for tomorrow. And, you know, it's... I just saw the goodie bags and I was like, man, you guys are upping the game from past Bring Your Child to Work Days events that we've had when I was an employee. And so it's really exciting just to see all of this. And really big shout-out to the staff because you guys are amazing and have worked your butts off to really pull this off.
I see the teams walking around with branded lanyards and everything. It's like, holy cow, guys are getting professional.
So cool. Great.
Okay. Any questions for clerk, the board? Very excited for tomorrow.
If I may give a quick update on next week's event also?
Yep.
So next Wednesday is the local official social. We invited several local and regional partners. And so far, we have about 70 registered for that.
Oh.
So if you want to still push to different groups, you can... the clerk can send out a list of who's signed up so far. But this, again, was the brainchild of the commissioners to say, let's convene and build relationships because a strong network of those relationships means better decision-making and regional cooperation within the county.
Do we have like an agenda for that?
The agenda this time is just connectivity. There will be probably a welcome from the chair to everybody. In the future, we look to try to theme some of them as we go through and we'll get commissioner input. But this one is just to come together.
Mostly just about a mixer. We like, Commissioner Fornier's talked about having like a theme, that it's just something we want folks to know about, high level in the future. But it's really just having a fun occasion for the electeds to get together. If we pick the fifth, you know, 5th Wednesday, and if you look at the calendar, we went through like the next two years, it's almost perfectly laid out to quarterly. It's like July, October, and April are the next ones. So it just... it lays out really nicely on the calendar to be a somewhat quarterly event that we do to just kind of have people come together and build relationships.
I'm always like, what are we gonna do? Like, you know?
I'm gonna be playing the banjo.
So it's always like, I'm always like, I like activity, structure. I want a mock trial.
Four of us...
Or a contest.
I have at least four band members and maybe five available. One guy is just getting out of the hospital, but we'll have a group of some kind.
Play some Minute to Win it games.
All right, that's the end of agenda and we're adjourned.